All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and peace.
Can I get a motion on the minutes of February 3rd, 21, the pre-deliberative?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, my mistake. I cannot make that motion. I have to abstain, I was not here.
Okay, I'll move it. I move that we accept the minutes of 2:31.
Well, I'm not gonna second you, I just second, I just second.
Can I just say one thing real quick?
I just remembered, that was, I was in the hospital.
Oh, sorry. Larry, can you call in?
Call in, I'm fine.
Just say where you are and who you are.
Oh, okay. My name's Larry Heath, I'm in my home office and I'm by myself.
Okay, thank you, next time.
There's Matt.
Oh, Matt, thank you. Okay, so Jamie, you seconded, right?
Yes.
Okay. I moved it. Okay, roll call vote. Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Abstain.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes for me. All right, I move to accept, I move to accept the minutes of 2:31, the deliberative.
Is that you moving it?
Yes.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion, comments?
I would comment that it was quite long, Mr. Baker.
All right. So roll call vote, we'll go with Larry?
Yes.
Pete?
Abstain.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Tammy?
Yes.
And yes for myself. I move to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2021. Okay, any discussion? I do have one correction on that. It's on page 10, 7.4. You wanna put the second in is Ms. Dutton. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Abstain.
Larry?
Yes.
And yes for myself. All right, communications, the manifest is done, right here. Nominations, Tom?
Yeah, I have one nomination, Melissa Hilfer, she'll be a one-year contract English teacher for the rest of the school year.
Okay, move to approve the nomination.
Second, are you moving?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Any discussion on that? Sorry. Okay, roll call vote, Tammy's yes?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And yes for myself. And resignations?
None.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to start off by taking a moment to acknowledge that this is the last board meeting of Mr. Heath, who has been a wonderful part of our school board for the majority of my time at Sanborn, and I just wanted to thank Larry for all of his hard work and for being a part of our team and supporting the students and families in the community of Sanborn through a really incredible transition from the, from the days when we first started talking about the reorganization to finishing that whole project is quite an accomplishment for an organization. And Mr. Heath has played an important part of that, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you and to let him know that we do have a gift for him, and we'll give that to Mr. Broderick to deliver to his home.
Was it a nice one? You may not get it, Larry.
If you take his, yours when it's your turn, Pete.
Thank you, Tom.
Depends on how you like all of you.
So I just wanted to take a minute to share some important information. On Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, our communities will be asked to vote on a number of warrants, including professional staff, teacher contracts, administrative contracts, and the overall school budget. So I just wanted to share a few things for everyone, for the public, as we're leading right up to the deliberative on Tuesday. We have a proposed budget of $35,525,942 for the 2021, 2022 school year. This is a reduction of $890,430 from the 2021 budget. And should the proposed budget fail, the default budget will be implemented. The default budget is $2,000 higher than the proposed budget, and the proposed budget has been unanimously supported by the school board and the budget committee. There are two collective bargaining agreements on the 2021 warrant. The professional staff contract has a raise of 1.5% in year one plus steps and 2% in years two and three, in addition to steps. The administrative contract is a four-year agreement that includes a cap on health insurance costs and has a 1.5% increase in year one and a 2.75% increase in years two through four. Both the contracts have been supported by the school board and the budget committee. Overall, the Sanborn administration, the Sanborn Regional Education Association, the school board, and the budget committee have worked collaboratively to balance class sizes, save money through efficiencies such as the reorganization of the district, and keep teacher salaries from falling further behind while recognizing the hardships our communities have faced during this pandemic. We continue to work toward the goal of cost efficiencies while supporting our staff and students. We invite you to join us in supporting the warrant articles this year on Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the Swayze Gymnasium on the Seminary Campus for Kingston and at 8D Merrimack Road Fire Rescue Station for Newton voters. So I really do hope that you'll join us, and I just wanna thank everyone for all of their hard work to get us. Every year, there's a lot to do, but this year was probably the hardest year in the last hundred years. So thank you, everyone, for everything you've done.
Can I ask just a couple of questions, yeah?
Sure.
When the COVID hit, how long was it before we were up and running? Four days, I think?
It took us, our, our team at Sanborn did a phenomenal job with COVID. We found out on Friday that we were going to probably be remote, and by the following Thursday, we were fully remote.
Okay, now, we had to go remote a couple of times once we were in, but it wasn't because the teachers wanted to go remote, because we had so many cases of COVID in the school.
That's correct.
Rules, if you were a teacher and you've got a COVID student in your class, you've got to go 10 days out. And we had so many of them that we didn't have the staff.
Yeah, at one point, we had-
Because the teachers didn't wanna come in and teach. So I know there are some school districts in the country that are saying, but our teachers had to because of the rules.
That is correct. We, we have been in school five days a week in person with a remote option for our students since mid-October. Most districts are only open two days a week. And they still have a remote group of students, so we-
If the parents want it.
Yes, our teachers, it's, it's by choice, and our teachers have been fantastic. We have had more in-person school days than most districts by a significant number. And I also think it's very important to recognize that on the weeks that we had to close, we had as many as 150 to 175 quarantines going on at that point. It, it really only became untenable at one point, and that was toward the end of December, but that was just the quarantine rules. It wasn't an un- Everyone was willing to come to work, it was just that you have to quarantine if you've been exposed. That's state and federal law, not, not local issues. So I, I think it's really important to recognize that the, particularly with the teachers' contracts, that they've done an amazing job this year. Administrators have done an amazing job, and I'm really, I really could not be more proud of my team. That concludes superintendent's report.
Okay. What do we have for committee reports? Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. From Jamie Whiters.
Finance. I was just gonna make a comment on Tom's.
Okay.
Basically, I, I just wanna echo what Thomas said, I said the same things at the deliberative session. Anybody's watching tonight that wasn't watching it's deliberative. The teachers have gone out of their way, I know that there's frustration, my kids are still- We have schools in this state just getting back to two days a week now. And, and we've had our kids in pretty much since just after the second week of October, with, with one exception that Tom just mentioned. They've done a good job for, for the community and for the kids, and we should be passing this. I know the community's hurting, I, I know that there is angst and lost jobs, et cetera. But we need to keep our teachers, and they've done yeoman's work for us through this COVID. And I, I would again ask people to support the, the warrant for the professional staff.
And, and the administrators, if I may add.
Yep, the administrators have done a great job also.
Yep, four and six, so.
Tammy?
Okay. All right, this is a report for the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee meeting on February 10th. In attendance were myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton, Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haines, Mr. Malilla, Mr. Snyder, Mr. McCluskey, Ms. DeRozier. Okay, Dr. Haines, Dr. Haines walked us through a demonstration of the Alma, Alma Systems Report Card template and provided a walkthrough for navigating the parent portal for us. Mr. Fitzpatrick commented that he thought the template was well-laid out and simple to navigate. Ms. Dutton requested more emphasis on consistency with the ISW, which is insufficient work submitted grade, which Dr. Haines and Mr. Ambrose said that's in progress, working with, have to be consistent on that. Mr. Malilla reported on the High School Diploma/Schedule Committee. They have had their first meeting, it was two weeks prior to our meeting. And I'll be meeting again, at that time, it was two weeks, I don't know if they've met since, probably by now they have. At that meeting, they've established three subcommittees to work on reviewing and revising the graduation requirements and the diploma with distinction. The first two committees, subcommittees, Career, Workforce, and Post-Secondary Schooling are to examine the needs of those students and how to best prepare and support them. And the third subcommittee is Other Schools, that committee's gonna review other graduation and diploma requirements of other schools and for comparison purposes. The committee is composed of 18 members, six administrators slash coordinators, seven teachers from different departments, one support staff, two and two subcommittee members, Mr. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Dutton, and two district parents, although some other members are also district parents. They, we just sort of listed them in their sort of main category. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 24th.
Thank you. Could I add one thing?
I just wanted to mention that we did, I did ask Mr. Malilla, just so you know, to add a Fremont board member who's a parent to the committee. Because we hadn't done that, so I thought that was important. And the second thing that I asked, or I wanted to remind folks of, is that at the next ISA meeting, we're going to have a presentation about our new math program. And that's really important, because they've worked really, really hard to figure out what to do for the elementary-level math instruction. And so that would, I would just say to folks in the community, particularly parents, that'd be a good meeting to watch.
Jamie?
Yeah, the finance committee met this afternoon, so I don't have a full report, but just some of the the highlights that I point out, we did at the most recent storm have three leaks were found at the Baky roof. So we're taking a look at that, Matt's got people coming in and- in terms of repairing those. And Mr. Angel also went through with us, we had some comparison of what previous estimates were on some of our larger projects and what the costs were. And on the Memorial Roof, it was, it was 54,000 estimate, 54,000 cost. Paving was 65,000 estimate, 65,279 actual cost. Long discussion on camera systems, we've had a server fail in Baky, and we're looking at upgrading analog cameras into digital cameras, so there's discussion on that. There was a budget request change for $34,000 coming from Health and Dental to Data Communications to cover the Comcast billing. The original estimates on the Comcast billing did not include taxes and fees, and the taxes and fees on the Comcast billing are actually, are actually that high. So that was, that was, voted to make that budget adjustment. And Mr. Angel also pointed out that he's anticipating another approximately $440,000 in, in COVID funding from a state grant, so those are the high points of the meeting, and I'll have it finalized and put officially after.
When you, when you mentioned, when you say budget adjustment, you, you mean line item transfer? You're making a line item, I just wanna be clear that-
Yeah, no, line item transfer.
Because there's a lot of talk about the budget right now, so just wanna make sure.
Thank you.
Everybody's clear.
Could I ask a question that perhaps should be on the finance for next year, even though the communities may be different? This COVID money is unanticipated, am I correct? So it can be spent. I'm not looking for, yes, it's gonna be spent on this, this and this, but do we have any indication of what our expenses are because of COVID that we might apply to that, so it doesn't hit the tax rate? I, I mean, I don't think it's anything for the next meeting or the next meeting, but I, I, I don't know. I'm on the finance committee, next year I might not be, I mean, we, we don't know. There's gonna be a whole new school board the next meeting. But I think it's something that down the road, there should be maybe a report on. Because if we've got money coming in to cover COVID, I don't think the taxpayers should cover COVID. You know, if, if there's even any expenses, I don't know. But could we perhaps put that somewhere in the hopper?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I skipped over facilities, so I've got a facilities report. This is for February 10th, our February 10th meeting. The meeting was called to order at 3:30 PM, all members were present. The committee reviewed the revolving fund balances as of December 31st, 2020. The balances were as follows, the Special Ed Fund is $241,168.81. The Capital Improvement Fund is $223,031.53. The Unanticipated Education Expense Fund, $150,196.05. And the Facilities Use Fund, which increased by $11,666.67, which is the monthly rent of the middle school for a fund total of $191,954.48. The total of the four funds is 806, these are as of December 31st, $806,350.87. That's a net increase over this time last year of $193,206.7. And this increase is made up of two reserve fund warrant articles approved by the voters last year, plus the middle school rent and interest on the accounts. The committee viewed a proposal prepared by Special Ed Teachers Kevin Bowdoin and Jim Enright. The proposal was presented by Mr. Enright. The proposal was for the construction and use of an eight-by-12 greenhouse. The academic purpose would be to provide students with a variety of hands-on experience integrated with classroom learning. For example, the students would experience what it takes to grow food, the impact of nutrients, as well as healthy food choices. They would learn about plants and animals, research, writing, and presenting, and some math activities, like money management. The project would be financed by fundraising. The estimated cost is $2,011. GoFundMe site has been, has since been established. The Facilities Committee was asked for site approval, and we approved the requested site. The location is adjacent to the paved road that runs behind the high school, abutting the walkway to the rear entrance of the cafeteria. The committee discussed several items that need to be added to the capital improvements plan. We heard about the status of two boilers at Baky School. You'll recall that we discussed the boilers that evening at the school board meeting and also approved the hiring of a mechanical engineer to advise on what, what will be needed, that was the school board. We discussed a maintenance vehicle replacement plan and the need for replacement security cameras at Baky. The school board also discussed the video cameras at the February 10th meeting. Also, Memorial School is in need of parking lot recoding and striping. We discussed problems with a sewer line at Baky which needs repairing. The parking lot at the Baky needs resurfacing in some areas and seal coating plus restriping. The business administrator also advised on some completed maintenance, a couple of failed heat pumps were replaced at Baky. The walk-in refrigerator at Baky was repaired, the refrigerator was manufactured in 1990, and the refrigerator may need replacing with a new, more efficient one. A new water filtering system has been installed at Memorial, the high school chimney needed servicing due to a filter problem. And at the seminary campus, the fire suppression system has been turned off in the grounds and tech buildings. The grounds building is currently used now as storage, and the tech building is not being used. The propane tanks have also been removed from the grounds building. The next facilities meeting date will coincide with next, the next school board meeting, which we will discuss later this evening. Please consult the sau17.net website for scheduling and access of location details. Okay, so that concludes the committee reports. And the Student Council report tonight, we have public comment. Okay, new business donations.
Yeah, okay, so let's see, the first one, I guess scroll down here. The first one is accepting a robotics donation for $3,500. It's a donation from First Robotics, which is a nonprofit out of Manchester, New Hampshire, and basically teams of students throughout the country build robots to do, to do tasks, and they have competitions, and these are huge competitions. So any other questions related to that?
So you need a motion to approve?
Yes, please. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Larry or Tammy, I don't know which one was first.
We all did, I feel like.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes, and thank you.
Tammy?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Okay, great, thank you. The next one is, is our donations for the Life Skills Greenhouse. Jim Baker spoke about the Life Skills folks, Jim Enright and Kevin Bowdoin coming to the Facilities Committee to ask for a greenhouse for, for the Life Skills students. They've already raised $2,226 towards that, that goal. I suspect we're gonna get a little bit more out of it. So I'm, I'm asking the, the school board to accept this donation towards that project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All right, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes for me.
Great, thank you. Like that, it confuses me, you know? I wanna start with Larry and then Tammy, I'm all like- Gotta keep you on your toes. Yeah, I know, I know.
All right, so Mr. Stack, grades 11 and 12.
So I'll do a quick preface on this. First of all, I just wanna say that we, we really try not to add things the day of a board meeting to an agenda. It's not, Brian came to me and Dr. Haines late yesterday with some concerns about some students who are struggling at the high school, who are seniors and juniors, and the number of failures were concerning. And then I met with Brian this morning at 10:30 to discuss potential plans, and then realized that the next board meeting may be quite a while, and we just felt like we couldn't wait. So I just want you to understand that the context is that we feel like we need to have this conversation today, because we didn't feel like we could wait until the potential next school board date, which is the later agenda item. So I, I just, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stack, it's pretty straight ahead.
It, it is pretty straightforward, so we've, since we came back from the holidays in January, we really started to focus as a staff on what our course failures look at, look like, by grade level, by department, by different ways that we're looking at it. And we've been tracking and seeing a trend that we're not proud of and we don't like. It's a much higher percentage of our students not passing some of their classes than we would like to see in the neighborhood right now, of about 17.5% of all of our courses that are being offered. So that's very high, all right, not normal for this time of year. Of course, with COVID, we recognize there's a lot of challenges. We're taking a lot of steps internally as a school to try to address that. But thinking about that and digging a little deeper into the data, we started looking at some of the differences between remote students and in-person students. And as we talk with our staff, one of the biggest hurdles that we have to overcome are not necessarily the students who are remote, but the students who are remote and just not engaging. Despite our best efforts to get them to show up on that computer every day to log in, and we're calling the parents, and the parents are equally as frustrated at their level in some regards. They simply just don't have the ability to be with them every second of the day to force the issue, and they're just, you know, they're, they're at a loss as to what to do too. So my question or my ask to you comes in the form of would, could we consider, much sooner than later, at least some of our grade levels, and we're, my recommendation is juniors and seniors who are remote, having that opportunity to return in the building if they would like to, so that we could try to provide additional supports for them here in the building that we just simply can't do if that starting problem is their ability to log in in the first place. You have some numbers in front of you to take a look at for people who are watching. People in the audience may be able to see that. We're roughly looking at, for our in-person students, the number of kids who are failing at least one class in grades 11 and 12 is about 50%. That seems staggering, I know, but that's what it is right now, I'm just, it's, the data is what it is. The kids are certainly aware of this, as are the parents. If you look at our remote numbers, for the students who are remote, the percent, the percentage of students who are failing one or more courses, for juniors, it's actually 63%, and for seniors, it's 53%. It's 48% for in-person, 53% for remote learners. The numbers that I gave you were the actual number of students, but I thought the percentages might carry a little bit more weight, apples to apples. You know, if we were to put it out to them, I don't know how many would come back. I think we certainly, I get requests almost on a daily basis at this point from parents or students saying, I really wish I could return now. I just feel like it's a better environment for me. And for the most part, the message is, we're not ready to do that right now. Occasionally, we have, we have had a few students with some extenuating circumstances, a lot of them with IEPs, et cetera, that we've handled a little differently, but that's a very small percentage. So that's what I got for you, and it doesn't mean we can't come back, and we will come back at future meetings and talk about other things that we're doing for this, but this is more of the pressing issue today.
So what, so I just wanna, before, before we go to questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just, I wanna make sure that everyone understands what we're asking. We're asking the board to make an exception to allow students who are failing in grades 11 and 12 to come back to school if they choose to right now. That also means that if they have younger siblings that they're caring for at home, they would be allowed to come back as well, because the family may not be able to manage that change, right? We have seniors that may not graduate and juniors who may not be able to take certain senior courses if they don't pass. The clock is ticking for that group of kids more. I want the board to know that we're probably gonna need to talk about remote instruction more over the next couple of meetings and, and the timeline for this, because I think that, that the number of cases and how low they are is wonderful. One problem that we face as an organization is that if we, if we change the date and move things faster for students to come back, we may run into a spacing issue. So the physical distancing component of our organization would become strained. Right now, part of the reason why we can do the social distancing in the schools is because about 25% of our students are remote. When you get all of them back, you can imagine it gets, we just need to be careful. We need to do this very carefully and mindfully. I support Brian's request as superintendent to bring back the students in grades 11 and 12 who are failing right now. At the next board meeting, we may come to you and say, we'd like to invite all the 11th and 12th grade students back. We just don't know yet. We need to see how this goes first and focus on where the struggles are. What I feel bad about is I don't want parents to feel like, oh, well, my kid's doing well in school, so they, they can't go back. Right? That's kind of a mixed message. But conversely, it's not fair to the younger students that we would allow the older students to come back. So I just said to Brian, you know, the, the number of course failures, he's been, he's tried a number of remedial issues over the last six weeks. And we spoke yesterday and today that, that those just aren't effective the way the high school would like them to be. So that's why we feel like we need to move quickly to get 11th and 12th back, but we need to keep working on this, and this may be a phased-in approach.
So when you say get them back, that's in the context of people who elected to be remote, and there was a certain, they had to stay remote for a certain timeframe.
Yes.
And now you're asking us to- And now you're asking us to relax that timeframe.
Exactly. The timeframe was until after April break and we're going to invite, and again, again, we're not going to make them.
Right.
Because they chose to be remote, but we're going to ask our juniors and seniors if they would like to come back, if they're struggling in school, if they'd like to come back right now, that that would be okay. And I wanted this to be a very transparent public conversation. I didn't want it to be Brian and I working it out and then explaining to you at the end of March what happened. I, I didn't feel like we could wait.
Yeah.
I felt like we needed to do this.
I just ask a question. The numbers that you were referencing, where, where those disseminated?
Oh, did you, wasn't that something, Tom?
I thought Phyllis put it in your folder. I've got it right here.
Okay, perfect. So Tom will share that with you. So we're talking about sixty, well, according to this, sixty-three students, juniors and seniors are remote and failing at least one class. That's as of Monday's data, so recognize the numbers are constantly fluctuating up and down. But that's, if all of them opted to come back, that would be the worst case scenario of how many we'd be talking about coming back.
Well, what about, what about this younger siblings, though?
Yeah, I can't, that would be a different, yeah, we'd have to, as they decide that they want to come back, we'd have to get a sense of how many have siblings.
And I did just share the data with everyone just in case I might have made a mistake and
Did you email?
May not have sent it to Phyllis. So if I didn't, I just sent it now. Yep.
One of the main jobs, if you're in the education community, whether you're a teacher, administrator, school board, is to give the opportunity. And that's what you're really saying here. We're giving them the opportunity. You can lead a horse to water, you can't make them drink. So this is something I think we must do. You know, I mean, we need to do, students failing, turn on the TV, watch the news, it's nationwide. We're no different than anyone else. But we have got to do something, in my opinion. You sounded declaring call, we now know we have a problem. What's the solution to the problem? I don't know the solution because I don't think problems have one solution. But this is really giving them the opportunity to make sure they're successful, which is what another thing we're supposed to do as teachers, our educators. We've got to do it. So I, my, I'm just saying, I don't want to belabor this, but yes.
Jamie?
I agree. I would like to have, I would like to be able to have all the students come back that wanted to, but it's a resource question, so.
Right.
I think a phase in approach is good, but it would be my opinion that we should let everybody come back that wants to as, as soon as we are able to do that.
Well, in a sense, we're doing the sickest first.
In some, yeah, in some ways.
I hate to use that term. I say students who need assistance.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, we would, we would look at that. I mean, if, if we have a student who is just barely passing all of their classes, I mean, honestly, I hope I would have a little bit of leeway to say, yeah, I think that, that makes sense to do so, but in terms of the spacing piece, what, what I will say about with the high school is we operate under a at least three feet apart distance. Now, if you've ever stood three feet apart from someone, that's pretty close. It's almost a little uncomfortably close to have conversation with them, right? So, and if you're in a high school, you really don't sit the kids that close anyway, because it creates other classroom management issues. So for the most part in our classroom spaces, it's never going to be an issue in terms of if all the kids are back or just some of the kids are back, we could keep them spaced out. The problem that we need to watch and that's, this is where the phased in approach comes in, is watching our loads of how many kids are walking in the hallways between classes. Lunch is definitely a concern because we, you know, we, we actually took the mini gym offline as a annex to the cafeteria and returned it to gym classes for the winter because it's just too cold to be outside and we were able to make do with the hallway and the cafeteria. But at some point, we're going to need that mini gym back to keep the kids spaced out six feet apart. You know, some other spaces, like when they're here in the library doing things or other, just other common spaces, absolutely makes sense to slowly bring them back, make sure that we can adjust and handle it, then bring another group back. I mean, it should be a continual effort and I would, I would hope the public, if they're listening to this knows, that would be our hope as well as yours, to be able to do this as quickly as possible, but in a safe manner.
And I just want to reiterate that, that my concern wasn't necessarily the social distancing at the high school facility. It's Baky Memorial.
Yeah.
Right? So I'm trying to figure that out and we're, we are actively discussing phasing things in and what we can do. We want kids back as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly think some of our kids will continue to opt to be remote and parents will say, yes, I know they're failing, but this is still a better environment. We can, we can handle the supports that we've already put in place, we think can work. We just need some more time to make them work, but some of our parents are going to say, thank you, because I, I can't make them, as Pete said, lead a horse to water. I can't get them to drink at home because I'm not there. You know, and that's really, those are perhaps the, the primary ones that we really are most concerned about.
Tammy?
Yeah, so I, I support bringing them back. I don't have any issue with that. I, I do want to also make a statement though, to set expectations. So we might have kids in school that are seeing other boards in other districts saying, we're just going to waive everybody, whether they're failing or not, we're letting them pass because we feel bad. I don't feel bad. The expectation has to be, you've got three months to fix it. Let's fix it together. Let's work together to fix it. But don't sit there thinking that somehow there's going to be a waiver or an amnesty at the end that says, I don't really have to do anything. You need to address the issues and you need to take ownership of your grades and your courses and we need to work with our students to get them to pass.
We agree.
And it's important that we communicate that to them. Don't think because this COVID thing is here that we're gonna, you know, give them the old blessing, move along.
Yeah.
For a local school kid here, but you know, you know, they have to realize that you, you got to do your job, you know.
And, and that's, those are, those are great points and we, we do hold our kids to high standards and the way our grading works, it isn't easy to just wave things off or scale them up or bump them up. I mean, one of my children was allowed to get like five points of extra credit from his quarter two grade for doing something incredibly insignificant. And he's like, see that dad? I was able to do that? Boom, no problem. Now I'm all set. We don't, those are things we don't do here. Our grades are, it's very much, they have to be able to perform at a certain level and that's where our teachers are getting stuck. We have some kids who are just not showing that evidence and they want to be able to see them so that we can do that.
I think more accurately, that's where some kids are getting stuck.
Yeah, absolutely.
That they aren't doing the work and we're holding them accountable and that's the culture that I want us to have as a school district.
Correct.
I don't know if this needs a motion or not, so I'm going to most, I'm going to put it this way. I make a motion that we support the decision to bring back the students who are in need of extra assistance, if I can use.
Grades eleven and twelve.
A grade eleven, twelve, I'm sorry, alright. So we're really supporting your decision.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Ask a question. As of what date?
Oh, you picked the date. I mean, you, you know, you know.
Tomorrow. I'm just saying, in your motion, you may want to say as of. That's, that's sure, okay.
Today, yeah, that's fine.
Whenever he wants to start.
Can't do it, you know, logistically tomorrow, but.
About as soon as possible.
They're not here yet, Brian.
What's that?
They're not here yet.
Perfect.
So somebody else has to second.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I thought you seconded it.
We just changed it though.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
And myself as a yes.
Perfect, thank you. So then my, my plan will be before the end of the week to be notifying those families to give them that option. So we'll probably be looking at Monday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Godspeed. Brian, did Mr. Dawson send you an update? Because I don't have one.
Mr. Dawson did not.
Oh man, it's in my folder. Thanks, I'm not used to paper. I do everything digitally.
Excellent. All right. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I have a Sanborn athletics update if you're ready for it.
Absolutely.
I'm not used to this paper stuff. It's kind of boring. On January twentieth, the Sanborn School Board rescinded the requirement that student athletes learn, learn remotely in order to participate in sports. Since that time, three situations have arisen among our eight teams. One team was largely quarantined due to a positive case within the team. They continued to practice and play with students who did not have to quarantine and others who returned to the team after the January twentieth change in procedure. A second student athlete tested positive but had been away from the team long enough not to require any quarantine. A third team was largely quarantined based on a positive test result by an opponent following a game. The last week of January, they missed several practices and one game as a result. One participant in that game subsequently, sorry.
That's right.
One participant in that game subsequently tested positive. Team number four was quarantined after a player tested positive following a practice, resulting in one unplayed varsity game and several with a combination of JV and varsity, which they almost won. All team members will return to action this week for the tournament. So we did it. I'm really happy about that. That was one of the big things we were concerned about. Mr. Dawson's recommendation is that we stick with status quo. Spring skills and drills continue planning for the spring season underway. So overall, it's gone very, very well. So thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work on our athletics.
Boiler update.
Okay, uh, let me just kind of give you a quick background story. So at Baky School, our insurance company asked us to take one of our two boilers offline because it had a, it sprung a leak out of it and it's probably as bad as if I poured out my water bottle. And so since then, we've, the, the second remaining boiler started weeping, so that kind of forced us to look at repairing or replacing the boilers and, and also looking at an engineering firm, which I asked the finance committee in the school board last meeting to, to waive the policy forbidding for engineering firms and, and we appointed H.L. Turner. H.L. Turner has since come out and inspected the boilers. They also, you know, I, I asked them to give us an opinion as to whether the boilers need to be replaced. I also asked them to consider, I'm sorry, to look at designing a new boiler system and with the consideration of future upgrades. We've delivered our existing building plans to H.L. Turner. We've also obtained separately a repair quote and a replacement quote of just the affected boiler. So the repair of that affected boiler is thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. That would be replacing all the cast components that are, they're like, it's like little loaves of our, our pieces of bread. It's all sandwiched together and all bolted through. To replace that one boiler is sixty-three thousand dollars, but that doesn't address the remaining boiler that is weeping. Okay, so right now we are waiting for H.L. Turner to, to start producing information.
So will H.L. Turner tell us the viability of repairing versus replacing?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's more than half the cost or close to half the cost of replacing.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's important to have an independent party other than the school district.
Yeah.
Giving information to the school board as to what direction to move in.
And not the salesperson.
Yeah.
Not the sales. We want it to be.
So they'll make a recommendation on what they estimate the return on investment would be if we repair it versus replace it.
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, I would like to know if they repaired both. Because once they have the personnel and the equipment there, you know, if we repair one, say, well, you know, first of all, we're running on one engine instead of two. But if they've got all their personnel there, you know, the second repair or the combined repair, I'm just going to throw a number out to give the idea. Hundred thousand dollars from both versus a hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty, you know.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to see situation where they say, you know what, we've got all the personnel there. And we're going to rip them both out, assume we go that way. And we got plenty of working room, so it'll be that much cheaper.
Yeah.
You know, and because you're buying two, you're whatever.
Just know that the existing boilers.
I would like to see that.
Yeah, they're, they're from like the late seventies, early eighties.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm not saying.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just giving you an idea.
Thirty-seven, sixty-three, but if you do both right now, a hundred or whatever they come up with.
Right.
Because it is a cost benefit.
Yeah, and, and the problem in trying to repair them is actually trying to find the sections of that particular manufacturer. Alternatively, we can have them cast.
We all run into that at home with electronics. They don't make it anymore.
When do you expect to have that report from Turner?
I expect to have that report back sometime later this spring. It's going to take some time to actually pull it together, okay?
So it's an in-depth study.
It's an in-depth study. I don't want to run to a solution. I'd rather, I'd rather delay and, and have a good, proper solution for the district than a quick one. Like a quick one would be, I would just ask the school board to spend sixty-three thousand dollars and get a new boiler. I'd rather take the time and do it right.
How's the boiler going to hold up? I'm sorry, how's the boiler going to hold up?
Um, that one boiler, it's running constantly. It's holding up okay. It's just starting to weep, which is a sign that it's starting to let go.
Okay.
I have a feeling it's going to make it throughout the, the remainder of the year. If it doesn't, it could, it's going to take me a couple of days to bring in a rented boiler. And I think a rented boiler without installation is about eighty-nine hundred dollars a month.
And that's an external boiler that then is piped into the system?
That's right. It comes in on a tractor trailer and they pipe it in. The only problem is, is we don't have enough, enough electrical power out on that corner of the building to support that boiler, so we have to bring in an electrician to run a line out to to an external boiler. You know, I, I'm trying to think of all the options. Okay, the, the, the worst case scenarios, so I have options to present to the board. But I think the best option is to kind of take our time, plan it out and come up with a really good solution.
Because we could replace that boiler now, but you're saying that we might not be replacing what we need?
I, I'm worried about, yeah, I'm worried that if we replace that boiler now and with the next round of funding coming down from the feds, we may be able to get some HVAC money and bring in some ventilation into Baky. I'd hate to come back to the board and say, oops, we bought the wrong boiler. It's not compatible with that system.
So you're recommending that even at nine thousand dollars a month, let's, worst case scenario.
Yes.
Fails, crashes.
Yes.
Installation fees, nine thousand dollars a month. That twenty or thirty thousand dollars is worth spending to do this right.
Yes, exactly.
This is, this is much anyway.
Yeah, we only have a couple more months of heating.
He's got his hand up.
Yeah, Jamie.
So just to, to go with your analogy of, of slices of bread and a loaf of bread, when you're talking about a new boiler, are you replacing a loaf or are you replacing a slice? Is it one of those compartments that gets replaced for sixty-three thousand or is it the entire unit with numerous?
It, it's the entire unit, so it's the entire loaf, okay? And, and I have to say that the boilers are like, they're like almost the size of these three tables together.
You can crawl inside them.
Yeah.
Clean them, there's a patch that you go in.
The new boilers that are out today are the size of this table. Okay, just to give you a comparison.
So just in, in, in my mind, from what I'm looking at right now, if I'm looking at thirty-nine thousand dollars to weld together something that's already thirty years old versus sixty-three thousand to get a brand new one that's going to have a life expectancy of twenty to thirty years, there's no way a repair is going to have a life expectancy of twenty to thirty.
In the efficiency.
Five year, three, three to five year kind of game.
Yeah.
So to me, that, that would seem the more logical choice to go based upon what I know right now.
Oh, there's one other thing I did ask the engineer to do is to look into dual fuel. Doing propane and oil. The, the thought is, is that if natural gas is brought up Route one twenty-five, I can pipe natural gas right off of Route one twenty-five, change the jets on the burner and then switch it over to natural gas, which is more cost effective.
Is there any reason to think natural gas is going to be wrought up Route one twenty-five?
Well, they're already at the end of flash, though, if you know, it's a pipeline.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Larry?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment there too, that you need to look at it from another direction. You've got a, you said the seventies, it was installed. You're going to have to watch out if you should decide, if the board here should decide uh, to replace just the, uh, sections. You're going to have heat stress on those other ones. And it's just a matter of time before they let go. And you're going to end up right back where you're at now. And if you've got two boilers going that way, you're probably going to have the same problem occur here in just short while on your second boiler. Uh, I think you need to keep that in the back of your mind. I will be here to help you guys. So, um, I think it's a good idea to wait and get a result from the engineering firm to see what they think.
So the reason we're waiting, we, I mean, it's, the board, I think, feels that the investment in a new boiler is well worth it versus the repair. The only reason we're waiting is because we want to hear what they recommend for a specific boiler, right?
Yeah.
Why is it going to take till April to do that? Or May?
Well, they just received the last plans yesterday. Okay? Um, it's, it just takes time to go through, digest the information that I've given them. Also go through all the notes that they took while they were out there. Um, I also asked them to that, um, you know, prepare for, to give me a proposal for, um, putting in HVAC. Cause I did get word that I, I may be able to tap into some money to design. So I may be back before the board here. So, um, I just, I just want them to, uh, um, I, I think it's going to be really before the end of March, before I start hearing word back from them.
Well, that's only three weeks, though. We have to remember the end of March isn't May. So if you think that you can work with them until the end of March, I would like to hear what they say, but
Yeah.
I just want to, I want to concur with Larry that it's sixty three thousand, Jamie, for one. But if we have to do both, now we're at a hundred and twenty six thousand.
Yeah, maybe not, if Pete's theory is right.
Right, if Pete's theory is right, but then there's this piece about if we have COVID money coming in that could be applied to air systems to help us in the future, then we might be able to work this all out. I just got a feeling that there might be some synergy in the air here and I'd kind of like to just slow down a little bit. Now, if we have an emergency and we need to come see you, we'll call a meeting.
Yeah.
Right? We're not going to like sit on this. If it, if it, if the other boiler dies, we're not just going to order in another boiler and we're going to come see you, right? We're going to call a meeting, even if it's virtual.
We only have, this is the first meeting in March. We have one more meeting in March and then we went to the beginning of May, so.
Yeah.
And it sounds like a long way, but it's really one more meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and if something happens, you'll let us know when we come in.
I, I'd like to go out to bid for boilers by May.
And there's no, at that point, there's no rush.
Right. Right, we're kind of limping to get through just like another eight weeks. Jamie had his hand up, Jim.
Oh, Jamie.
Uh, Matt, you said that you shared with them the, the specification designs or whatever. Can you share that with us also, please? Can you, can you get that in for files?
Um, I, yeah, I, I can give you, um, these are all, these are all building designs of what our current existing, um, uh, facility is. So I'll, I'll let you ha- um, have them, but they can't be shared outside.
Understood.
Okay.
Alright, so, thank you. Um, rescheduling date of the next school board meeting.
So I, I did mention at the last board meeting that, um, St. Patrick's Day is the seventeenth of March. And then we had talked about potentially having the next meeting on the eighteenth so that we could assign committees. And then Dr. Ross Green offered to do a free webinar with our families on the eighteenth, but I found out from him today that it really, it's a webinar. It's not an interactive conversation. He's going to present information and talk to people in the chat. So if it's good with the board, I'll, we'll just have the board meeting on the eighteenth and I'll assign attending that to Heidi Levitt, our guidance director.
Yeah.
So that I can be here with you. I think Ms. Dutton would like to see the Ross Green webinar, but I will ask him if, if they can record it so that she can watch it later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does everyone feel, I, I just thought that was better than waiting till Monday, the twenty second?
St. Patrick's Day is a holy day of obligation. I will be.
Okay, Pete.
I don't know. So.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, and you've got time to sit in them.
No, I, I hear you. That's a very good accent.
Esther McBroderick.
Yeah.
Soprano school requirement, right?
Wow.
Sorry, I just found that out at four o'clock, Jim.
Okay, that's good.
I just want to let you know.
Good. Any, uh, school board input on?
I like the eighteenth better than the seventeenth.
Yeah.
He may be with me.
Alright, so how about a motion to move the school board meeting to the eighteenth?
So moved, second, there we go.
Uh, roll call vote. All in favor? Tammy?
Yes, although like I said, there's a Bruins game that night.
Oh.
We'll have to make a quick meeting.
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Larry? Are you?
Yeah, I don't care if they're all.
Alright, well fortunately we have a quorum. Alright, so it's the eighteenth. And so then I assume the facilities meeting will also be on the eighteenth.
Yes. And ISA will be on the non-meeting twenty fourth because of the math, we have to meet. Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, second public comment. Kevin, was your comment just for Brian or was it for all of us?
Oh, I just pulled him while he had a copy of the body to ask for whatever he felt like.
Oh, okay, alright.
You guys seem to be in pretty good mood tonight.
He does not need encouragement on that front, Kevin. I can, I can, yeah, vouch for that.
They're just happy because I didn't die in that accident.
That's why.
See me.
Amen.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, so next meeting agenda. Oh, yeah, so, um, so if you can have anything you want added to the agenda on the Thursday before, please send me that or copy me, send it to Tom, copy me. Um,
That'll be our organizational.
Yes, it will.
Thank you. So I think it's important for the public to know that that will be the organizational meeting where the board will choose a new chair. The new members will be seated in the committee, subcommittees. That will be the primary agenda that night.
What, what's that?
Unless we have a board.
The next meeting? The eighteenth?
On the eighteen.
So if you have a committee assignment that you would, you would like, Mr. Baker, would you like them to forward them to me or you now in lieu of kind of the, we're in that gray zone or how?
Yes, we should wait till the ninth and see what happens, you know?
Yeah, there'll be new members.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I just, if I could, I want to clarify one thing. It's presumed to be the organizational meeting. If in fact, there is a recount.
Right.
You might not have
Yeah.
all the members.
Then we have to push.
Always one member, right?
That's fine.
Well, no.
Then you have to push it out.
No, by the eighteenth.
Is, is seated. Right.
It's, okay, uh, it, it's an interesting, I don't want to get into the statute because we ran into that one already. But it's an interesting statute, but, um, you, you, that technically the, the what, you're not the secretary of the
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you started.
Lewis runs the meeting.
Yeah, well.
Right.
That's your skedaddles.
But I think as long as we have a quorum, we can have a meeting, but you can't pick.
Yeah, there wouldn't be, that we could have a meeting, but there wouldn't be a purpose in terms of everything else's.
Yeah.
So I mean, and, and again, Tammy, just so you know, if something like that occurs, which is, would be very weird, I'm more worried about.
Have a recount?
No, I mean, uh, not have a meeting, like a snow day would surprise me less than having, you know, it, it's not like we have a speaker planning to come on the twenty fourth to the ISA meeting.
Okay.
If we need to move that back a week, we can do that. We'll figure it out, right? We'll, we'll, it'll be okay. Like, we want it to happen as soon as possible though.
Yeah.
Cause we want to get moving with professional development and whatnot.
Okay.
Doctor Haynes is very excited, so.
Oh, good. That's good.
Alright, so we're all set with the eighteenth. Um, the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, or not Tuesday, Thursday, March eighteenth, I think that's right. Is it Thursday?
That's correct.
Okay.